Tonight, we have a study session, and so we're gonna start off with some recognition awards and proclamations. And so we'll get started there. So if I could invite Councilmember Stewart.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you want?
Oh. Right ahead.
Mayor Hartke? I think he's here. Mayor Hartke?
President.
Vice Mayor Rowe?
I'm here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Ellis?
Here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we've got people betting that we can't get out of here in 22 minutes. But that's the over/under, so. But we're gonna get started. So the first thing we're gonna do is have some recognitions, and I will pass it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. We do have two service recognitions this evening, and for the first, I'd like to invite our Chief of Police, Sean Duggan, to come forward.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'd like to invite George Toll to come forward in recognition of his 20 years of service with the city. So George began his law enforcement career with the Chandler PD as a police officer in 2002. He spent six years in patrol, working various areas of the city, and in 2008, he was selected as a member of our traffic motor team. His primary responsibility was to investigate traffic collisions and related violations. In 2011, George sustained injuries from an on-duty accident that forced him to retire unexpectedly. However, he was not ready to leave the department. He accepted a position as a park manager and quickly found many similarities to his former sworn position, where he became a tremendous asset to the department. In 2020, George accepted a new position as one of Chandler PD's first police aides, where he responds to not emergency calls for service out on the street. George has helped pave the way for additional positions within that unit. So George, thank you for your continued dedication to our city and our department for over 20 years. You are a valued member, and we truly appreciate your service. So congratulations on 20 years, George.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, our second service recognition tonight, we read by me, and it's actually a surprise, this person doesn't know that they're getting this tonight. So please join me in congratulating Dawn Lang for her 15 years of service to the city of Chandler. Come on down, Dawn.
Yay, congratulations, Dawn.
I think she thought that we missed her, but we did not. Dawn joined Team Chandler in April 2007 as Assistant Budget Manager, having previously served in public finance roles for the communities of Umatilla, Oregon, and Dubuque, Iowa, as well as in the private sector as a CPA. In Chandler, Dawn's exceptional talents helped her quickly rise through the ranks, becoming Budget Manager, Assistant Management Services Director, and finally, Management Services Director in less than five years. Last August, she was promoted to the role of Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, where she continues to oversee the Management Services Department, as well as the IT Department, the Facilities and Fleet Division, and the city's Sustainability and Performance Management Initiatives. While you may see Dawn and her team leading numerous important city initiatives, including the annual budget, bond elections, home rule, utility rates, and more, she is also known for her dedication to the public finance profession, having served on the National Board and several committees for the Government Finance Officers Association. An avid member of Kiwanis International, Dawn has served as both President of the Chandler Club, as well as Lieutenant Governor of the Southwest District. During the rare times she's not working, you can usually find Dawn volunteering in our community, hanging with her husband Mike and Wonder Dog Enzo, or enjoying Mexican food at La Casa Blanca in South Chandler, which I have yet to visit, but Dawn says is great, so I'm going to do so. Dawn, thank you for 15 incredible years of making our community strong in so many ways. We appreciate you and look forward to your bright future with Team Chandler. Vice Mayor, that concludes our service recognitions this evening.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. So we have two proclamations. Let's start with our Building Safety Month Award, and we could have Tao come down and his other group, the rest of the group. So I did get new glasses, so, and it's fine print, so we'll go through it, though. We want to be safe, so. Okay, proclamation. Whereas, our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes. Buildings and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, safety for all. Building Codes in Action, the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages us to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. Now therefore, Mayor Kevin Hartke, the mayor of the city of Chandler, Arizona, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council, for your support to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. Tonight, we are here not only to raise awareness about the importance of building safety and building codes, but also to recognize and appreciate the building safety professionals for their commitment, dedication, and hard work. As the city of Chandler continues to grow, we will face opportunities and challenges. We, as a team, are committed to creating safe and sustainable buildings for our citizens and the community at large, not just for this Building Safety Month, but for every month. Thank you all.
All right, we'll put you right in the middle. Step down here, folks, just a little bit. We want you to come down this way, just a little ways, center, right here under the, come on, folks, down, move to your right, move to your right, move to your right a little further, a little further, a little further. Trying to make it easy for our photographer person. All right, I'll be down here on the end. You good? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have another proclamation. It's for Water Safety Month, and accepting is Fire Battalion Chief Keith Welch. And I guess we're also gonna have Aquatics Recreation Coordinator Jessica Chamberlain and Chandler Police Officer Noah Duker. It's a team effort. Oh, I'm gonna have Mark read this one. There are a few wheres.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On behalf of this proclamation from Mayor Kevin Hartke, Chandler recognizes the swimming and aquatic-related activities as an integral part of communities and provide rewarding experiences that improve physical, mental, and emotional health for all citizens. And the city's aquatic centers and programs make Chandler an attractive and desirable place to live, work, play, and visit while contributing to its ongoing quality of life and overall vitality. And the citizens of Chandler understand the essential role that water safety education plays in preventing drownings and recreational water-related injuries. It is very important. The aquatic and fire industries are partnering with their ongoing efforts, commitments, to educate the public on water safety issues and initiatives. And the citizens of Chandler understand that they must be diligent and practice water safety rules with families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, user of public swimming facilities, or visit tours to our water parks and lakes. Water safety extends beyond pools and large bodies of water. Citizens must also be mindful of household amenities such as toilets, tubs, and large buckets of water. Now therefore, I, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the city of Chandler, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Water Safety Month.
Okay, okay, Keith, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council, for having us up here. I'm happy to stand up on stage, too, with my partners here, that over the last few months, we actually planned and executed our first water safety walk, or not our first, but our water safety walk for the month of May on the first Saturday of the month, and that's typically when we do it. And I just wanted to let you know, it was a huge success, much bigger than last year. We're through the, obviously, some of the COVID restrictions, and we were back. We had 130 volunteers out at this event at our Station 6, and we blanketed 3,000 homes in the Ray and McQueen area, and that's the scenario that we targeted this year to get out. We like to move around the city and target different areas. Last year, we were in Nacotio. Obviously, we have a bunch of man-made lakes there, and we'd had some issues there. So we do analyze those things and kind of try to determine the best place to go. And I just want to reiterate, it's pretty simple, and the simple message is, you know, ABCs, always have a supervisor, have barriers, and get your children signed up for classes.
Let's take a picture.
Yeah, let's move down just a little way. You guys are good at knowing where the mark is.
Thank you. Okay, our next opportunity here is for recognition for Valley Christian Basketball and Volleyball Championships. So if you all could come down.
Congratulations.
So accepting is Greg Hoagsmann and Bob Davies, and they are the coaches, and we'll have all the team members here, as many as we could get to come down, and maybe we get one team to go that way and one team to come this way. Volleyball, volleyball over here. Okay. I think we're all here. Tonight, we are celebrating some of our most talented Chandler athletes from Valley Christian High School. The girls' volleyball team won the 3A State Championship, beating the number-one seed three games to none in the finals. Awesome, awesome. Not to be outdone, the boys' basketball team is also the 3A State Champion after coming back from a 14-point deficit in the second half of the finals. Congratulations to the athletes and coaches, Greg, and, oh, congratulations to the coaches, and we'll have.
Oh, no, the girls said, oh, no. And I got out notes, so that's bad. So my name is Bob Davies. I am a volunteer coach at Valley Christian. Along with that, I'm also a vice chair of our Board of Directors at Valley. First, thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor, and the City Council members for taking the time to recognize this accomplishment, these young ladies, their hard work and dedication. In addition to the 3A Championship this year, the team's list of accomplishments includes quite a bit, so I'm gonna go through it real quick. 3A Player of the Year, Ms. Cara Braun, raise your hand, Cara. Yay, Cara. Cara will be continuing her volleyball career and education next year at San Diego State University. The 3A Defensive Player of the Year, Ms. Kate Phillips. Kate is just a junior, however, she is verbally committed to play at U of A. The 3A Coach of the Year, Ms. Lindy Ramsland, the head coach of the volleyball program. We were very blessed to have her, and there's a lot of commitment and dedication there. We also had four girls that played, or that were named to the all-conference team, first team. We had a freshman recognized on the second team, another freshman recognized on the honorable mention, and two of our juniors, Kate and Cora, to my right, were, just this last week, won the Pairs State Championship in beach volleyball, so that's pretty awesome as well. Just real quick, the work ethic these ladies demonstrate on the court and on the sand is evident, but what impresses me the most is their accomplishments off the court. All 10 of our varsity players qualified for the All-State All-Academic Team. These young women of Christ are future doctors, lawyers, engineers, educators, and businesswomen, who will have huge impacts in their communities in the future. As a board member of Valley, I see firsthand the importance of our long-lasting partnership with the city of Chandler. I want to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, City Council members for their hard work and their dedication for making Chandler the best city in Arizona.
Thank you. Way to go, girl.
Oh, I hear somebody. Christine, did you have a comment?
I said, way to go, girl.
There you go. All right, well, fantastic. My son-in-law play web, coaches at Park University Volleyball, so we get to watch a lot of volleyball, so you guys, great job. So for the guys, who's gonna speak? Bob?
Greg.
Greg?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council. This was a very special team this year. Again, similar to like what Bob said, we also had the 3A State Player of the Year in Caleb Shaw. Caleb is going. Caleb's gonna be continuing to play basketball at the University of Northern Colorado next year. We had a number of other people that made All-State teams also. Team was 27-3, participated in many multiple bigger school tournaments, and just had a fantastic year. We want to thank the city of Chandler for just supporting Valley Christian as a whole. As Athletic Director, we have seen the support of Valley, and we hope that not only athletically, as you see here tonight, but academically and in our fine arts, that we will continue to make Chandler a destination. to make Chandler a destination place as one of the schools in our community, and hope that those that move in will see this as a great place to live.
Okay, I think we're going to take a picture, but let's do it separate. And if the rest of the council could come down, let's hear for a picture. And so, guys, could you... Guys, if you'll move down just a little, just 10 feet, 10 feet down here. And ladies, right here in the center, right here in the center. Council members? All right. Guys, ready? Okay. Congratulations, ladies. And now, guys, come on over here. All right. Council members in front, that's right. How we doing? Can you see everybody? What do you need to bring out? Congratulations. And I think that's the last of our awards. Okay, there's some serious grocery bills there. So but yeah, we should be very proud. All right, so the city, we are in a study session, so everybody's had a chance to look at that. Were there any comments?
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment about item number 14. I see the $8 million price tag pop up on the agenda. I usually want to know a little bit about it. So thank you, staff, for kind of filling me in on this. So this week, we're going to vote on a change order for a much larger water project that the 101 and 202, a couple of years ago, pipe burst, and there was some project anomalies. And we had a little bit of a water leak, and we ended up getting that fixed pretty quick. It cost us quite a penny, but we worked closely with the state, because it was a state project, to basically get reimbursed $8 million to complete that project. So we're basically putting the money up front, and then we are, we'll get that money back from the state. But I really wanted to thank Governor Ducey, President Fan, Speaker Bowers, Senator Meznard, Senator Bowie, Representative Winiger, Representative Cobb, Representative Jermaine, Representative Pollak, and Representative Epstein. Those are all, most of those are our own reps here for Chandler in the West Side and Central and South Chandler. And so we're grateful for their support in getting that funding back to us, because that's the kind of money we use to pay for parks, police, and things like that. So thank you very much. That's all ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lopez.
Just a quick shout-out, too, to the Board's Commission members that will be ringing on. So we've got Board of Adjustments, Healthcare Benefits, and the Chandler Museum Foundation. We're appointing three more members, so always like to thank them for getting involved. I was going to say the names, but no. Ilya Mari Vasquez Houston, Jennifer Hupenthal, and Jackie Ryan. So thank you for getting involved and staying to keep our community great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? In that case, that ends our meeting. See us back here on Thursday if you decide to come back and enjoy that. We'll be here at 6 o'clock this Thursday.